...at 6:45. So this is the October meeting of the Committee of the Whole, Administration and Finance, for the Township Bidders Perkard. And the second item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Chair's looking for a motion to approve the agenda circulated by Councilor Smale and seconded by Mr. Bradman. Those in favor? Motion is carried. Is there, under item number three, are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest tonight? And if so, what is the general nature thereof? Hearing done. Moving on to item four on the agenda, which is business arising from the previous Administration and Finance Committee meeting minutes. Does anyone have anything to bring up from those minutes? Councilor Morrell?
I may, Mr. Mayor. Basically, it's page four or five in the last thirty minutes, basically, you think with your report. And one of them's already been answered. I was wondering if there was any update on the press cut machine welding, so that's already been answered. Any update on the 7/30 issue? And the other one I had was, there was a request to see about services, the charging for services on vacant lots, or something in that. I just wondered if there was a, I think that was the last part. Number six, page four or five, number six, Mayor say, our request staff to look at building water, wastewater options for unsold lots. And the other two, but you've already, one's been answered, 7/30 truck stop. Is there any update on those?
Okay, so there is a report on the 7/30 truck stop. And I think if it's okay, I'd like to leave that for the Mayor's report. Not that it's that lengthy, but I'll deal with it there. But I'll ask the CAO to deal with the other issue, which is the services for the unsold lots in the flat subdivision.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we have asked our planning consultant to do some best practices research to see whether that's something that can be added to a subdivision agreement after the fact, or if it's something that is typically imposed as part of a subdivision agreement. And I expect to get his report.
All right. The awkward spot there is that those lots are owned by some private individuals, and, you know. Anyway, that's another issue. And you're right, you have to keep that issue in the forefront. Are there any other questions with regard to the previous minutes? Hearing none. We're about to move on. Item number five on the agenda is delegation and presentations. We have none this evening. Item number six is discussion items. Again, we have none. So I'm at item number seven, which is the action and information items. And the first information item coming forward is 7A, the third quarter billing report. You have the billing report in front of you. Really like this format of presentation, if I can say that. But does anyone have any questions to ask of the chief billing official? Well, I should give the chief billing official an opportunity to speak to the report because he has spent some considerable amount of hours, first of all, generating the information and secondly, reporting it. So, Mr. Hawkins, if you'd like to speak to the report.
Thank you, Worship. On the cover page, I mentioned about a recent conference I went to in Kingston with the OBOA delegation of about 700 officials of my capacity across Ontario. Certainly a worthwhile convention, as we shared a lot of the billing trends right now in our province, the change of government that's happening, what the guess is of what may happen with some of the legislation in that process of billings. And that's all, of course, out there in no man's land right now, but a lot of speculation going on. One of the interesting facts that I noted here was that new bills, especially in rural areas, is down the last two years across Ontario. And a lot of that has to do with some of the past legislations in the billing code they're guessing because of the push towards the zero industry that our past premier wanted to see, with all the energy efficiency happening and just how tough it is and how hard it is in home builders to make that happen. So they're hoping there will be a little bit of a swing back, not that we don't want to get to zero efficiency, but just some of the legislation that happened so quickly has been very, very difficult to implement into the billing code. So anyway, we're not far off from where we need to be, but we are down from the last couple of years. And we're going to keep anticipating that's going to go back up again, so.
That's residential?
Correct.
Yes, go ahead.
In regards to industrial and commercial, we're doing well with that. Of course, Industrial Park, as you're aware, is having some good changes there and continual growth, so, and even tonight's presentation is another good news story for our area, so.
So any other follow-ups here?
I really like this report. It's very informative and easy to follow.
One of the things I'd just like to follow up on though, from your report at the conference, so you're saying that across the region, there's a noticeable decline in rural residential constructs. Is that what you're saying? And do they not relate that to the provincial policy statement, which is trying to force residential development into the serviced areas? I mean, clearly, that's been a provincial initiative over the past eight years. But at the conference, do they not relate those two things?
No, the conversations I had, Worship, were basically around the table, around the meal tables and informal settings. So there was nothing as far as a seminar that addressed those. This was basically conversations that were going on as we asked each other, you know, where are your struggles, what's happening, what are the good things? And of course, I usually hang with the guys that are in my sphere of growth. So the guys in Toronto don't matter to me, really. And the guys in Ottawa don't matter to me, really, because I'm not in their level as far as the number of residential buildings. But in these areas of 35,000 and less, you're seeing a lot of that, that, you know, there's a lot of negative, like, not huge growth in those areas right now.
Okay, now, the other thing is, we've, so up to the end of this report, the period covered by this report, we've got 12 new residential buildings under construction, which is not far off our 16 total for last year. So will we make that 16 total? Can you tell by what you're seeing in October, November?
We had a potential, easily, but it just depends who's going to be wanting to build, right? So hard to forecast that, but I hope so.
Okay, so if there are no other questions, we're about to move on. I'll ask for a motion to approve or to receive and review all of these reports after we've gone through them all. So 7B, the next report, is the third quarter bylaw report, bylaw enforcement. Again, that report has been circulated. Give, first of all, an opportunity around the table, any questions, anyone? Mr. Councilor Morrell?
Again, it's a very comprehensive briefing note. It's, you know, it's short, to the point, and it explains what's happening in bylaw. But I do note there, I don't know whether it's a keenness of our new gentleman, Mr. Buffett, but man, the clean yards bylaw incidences have gone up considerably, like in this section 52 compared to 20 and 12 in the previous quarters. Usually, things like clean yards and that kind of get noticed more in the spring, right after the snow goes and there's complaints and so forth. These are a combination of complaint-driven and observation-driven by the bylaw officer, as you state. So that's something that really struck my fancy. And the other thing, if I may, on the next, on the next page, the second page, is site visits. If you look there, July, when you look at all these site visits, and, you know, you got August, you got July, and so forth. But what I'm wondering is, here, there's some that are still open. You look at those, and I think there's a lot of good work being done. There's a lot of assertiveness being taken by the people that are working for the township to get, you know, you never get a second chance to make a first impression. That's obviously what's driving this. But there's, when I see, you know, Cardinal Four, Spanishville Four, you know, site visits four, 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 and the status is still open, I guess I, my question arises to, from my perspective, is, we've got some people here that are just kind of pulling your chain and saying, oh, well, I'll move this garbage can from the front of the house around the back, once they're gone, and, you know, that says I moved it this week, and I get a pass, and then the next time, I've got two garbage cans, oh, I'll move it around. And it seems like there's a lot of callbacks, time spent, repeat, going to the same individuals. It looks like it's the same individuals, or they're the same problem. I guess it's, I shouldn't be that, but it is, and I know in the education realm, it's that 5% of students take 95% of the time. You know what I mean? Like, they're the ones who spend your time. But I guess I'm looking at, are they just kind of jerking our chains? Yeah, I guess for lack of a better expression. Are they, you know, playing footloose and fancy free and saying, are, I know there's a process, the warning, the this, the that, you know, right up to the legal proceeds, you know, should we not just, maybe just, I'm not saying how you should do your job, but is there any means that we should, you know what I mean, knock on the door and, I don't know what that's, but.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I may, I think it's a bit of an assumption that all four times we make contact. It's not the case. Often, it takes two or three trips to a site in order to make contact with someone who can do something about the problem. And I'm quite certain, especially with Mr. Buffett, I listened to him on the phone this morning, I'm quite certain he doesn't take any...
Bunk.
Misdirection from him.
Misdirection.
Well, I think the fact that there's been 52 new files open in regards to clean bylaw, clean yards bylaw, and 36 of those files have been closed, which tells me that there's a fair level of compliance at the door. Now, 16 still open, I can understand that, that's about the right percentage of folks that are a bit reluctant to comply. But how is, how is the, from a staff perspective, how is Mr. Buffett finding the interface at the door?
Speak to that.
Sure. So I think we're real privileged to have Mr. Buffett. He's had a number of years in enforcement in a variety of capacities. Our goal still is always compliance, not court. And we'll go a couple extra visits, get compliance before we go to court, because we go to court, it's a loss all the way around to everybody. So if we can get compliant on two more visits, we'll make that happen. But he is very good, one-on-one, and very good on the phone. And he spends very little time on-site. He does so much of it on the phone, and gets compliance so quickly. He's got a real good mannerism to make that happen, so.
Any other questions here at the table? Or do you want to say anything more about the report?
They're good. They're good reports.
They are.
Well, all I can say is that I really do feel that, especially in the villages, there's, I'm sensing a real desire to see the effort that we're making. I see, I get reports anecdotal, that people are pleased with the results, and that they notice the results, and that they're receptive to continue to work in this area. All right, so now I'm on to 7C, which is the third quarter treasury report, reserves and reserve funds, et cetera. So I noticed the treasurer's not here, so that means we'll put the CAO on the spot. So does, first opportunity, folks around the table, to ask any questions? Nobody bringing up anything from these reports?
If I'm reading this correctly, the thing that stood out in my eyes, in fact, if we look at the reserve, reserve funds, if I may, through the chair, Mr. Mayor, if we look at that sheet, I think the bottom, the grand total, has shown I've got, you know, considerably increase there. Am I right? A big increase of close to $500,000 in reserve?
Well, I think the number to compare it to is the balance that opened on January the first, 2018, was 6.6 million. And the projected balance, well, actually, the balance, I'm going to do them to 30, appears to be 7.172. I guess the...
Close to 500,000, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that's a good sign, because I remember last year, recall the budget last year, there was some concern about the reserves being, so that's shown that actions taken at that time are, you know, let's say, moving positive.
Well, and the big thing, too, is the whole purpose of reserve and reserve funds is to build up funds ahead for projects. And we know that we had built up a number of funds in the waste, Cardinal Wastewater and Cardinal Wastewater Reserve to be used against the Walker Street project. So it was our intention to draw down those reserves this year to finish Walker Street. But my understanding from the recent briefing note that we had from the treasurer is that by extending that contract into 2019, it looks like those reserve funds will not be drawn down this year, probably happen in 2019. Now, any questions with the asset sheet, assets and liabilities? Hearing none. I'm looking very quickly at the long-term debt report. I don't think we've incurred any new debt in the last quarter. Actually, I think the last new debt that we incurred was the, that the 2018 Sherwood Silver Auto that we took on a lease, is that the last one, I think?
Yeah. It was a purchase?
It was a purchase?
Yeah, at 0%.
Well, it's on long-term debt sheet, so it looks like balance owing is 40,000. With annual payments of 11. Everything else is coming close to the end of the greenfield ethanol, payments on the low lift station. And United Counties of Leeds and Grenville, still a triple-A tenant, I think, as of today. As of today, District Park, this is as we go along, the county council reviewed the projected balances for the year-end on county council, and it looks like if everything proceeds through the third quarter as it has up, or through the fourth quarter as it has up to the end of the third quarter, county council will run a slight surplus in the operating account and a rather substantial surplus in the capital account due to capital projects that have not yet been mounted. So if there are no other questions with this report, we're about to move on. Hearing none. Deputy Mayor?
The capital project fund, about?
Yes.
Sorry. The, I'm focusing on recreation here, that's my value. The 864 that was spent, was that for the, did they dig the piles for the new dock? Is that what that was for?
Oh, I, I'm sorry, Madam Deputy Mayor, I can't actually answer that question. I doubt very much if that's what that's for. I think the work may have been started, but we would not have had the build by the end of September.
Yeah, okay. Sorry. And the, do you know how much the deep fryer increased to get turned over to the next, as working progress?
Yeah, it was 8,300.
How much?
It was, we were, when we did our budget, we were told 6,500. We're now being told that they're 8,300.
And so what is the plan? Are we going to purchase or defer?
Right now, we're likely going to defer until 2019. We'll whip the 6,500 forward and then add.
Right. Any other questions? Go ahead.
Just the compressor that you're actually, I thought that was kind of important, that we weren't going to get another year, so I'm surprised to see that as being.
Yeah, we had Simco in to take a look at that compressor at the, at the end of last season, so in the spring there, and they felt it was, it was good to go for another year. It's been well-maintained, so we'll keep using it and plan to replace it next year.
So the 30,000 will be carried forward? And most of the public works, roads work has been completed, as I read the report, except for the 70,000, oh, that's, it looks like work's been done, but we haven't been invoiced.
That's right.
And anything else coming here? Hearing none? Okay, I'm about to move on. So now, on that 7E, which is the holiday, oh, no, sorry, 7D, the third quarter budget variance report. And so it's, again, this one is also looking good, is the way I read it. Does anybody have any comments here?
Is that increase in the fire as a result of your going after the MTO or accidents on the 401?
The income, you mean?
Can we get an answer on that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're honestly not sure. We feel that it's possible that there may be a new administration at the other end of our applications for reimbursement. We have never, we have persisted in sending every invoice in. So it's not like we're adding more invoices to the mix, but more of them seem to be getting paid. So we feel that there's maybe been a change in the administration at the other end of this, at this staff level.
So they're actually identifying the ones that they're paying?
Yeah. And they're, and they're paying more of them, so I, we're not sure. We're just sort of, keeping our fingers crossed and it continues.
Councilor Morrell?
If I may, through the chair, Mr. Mayor, I just want to point something out, that I highlight this every, every month on our disbursement sheets and so forth, we get, you know, an update on our costs. If you look at page three, budget variance report, very last, two last items there, and I'm just trying to, I'm just going to draw attention to them, because the two items are waste disposal and transfer site, the costs and so forth, and what we budgeted for garbage and recycling and so forth with the township, and then curbside waste and recycling, the actual pickup of our garbage. And we budgeted 350,000. So I look at it and I say, well, we budget 350, but monthly our total is around 32,000, 32,160 or something like that. So that's, you know, you're around 360,000 per year. And I know last year, 2017, I think, you know, people think that these things pay for themselves, but that's a lot of money in garbage pickup and recycling. And garbage bag tags and sales, and $5 dump things do not cover costs and even balance. And I think it was last year, we were running something like a $100,000 deficit, and staff was trying to say, let's do, let's get it down to 68,000, 70,000 this year, or see if we can. It comes out of general revenues to make up that difference. So the idea that the garbage bag sales and whatnot, I'd just like to point that out for people might assume that, you know, they all balance out, they're making enough, it doesn't balance out. We're running a deficit from those areas, that's a lot of money. And garbage bag sales, think of how many times you buy garbage bags and so forth and put them out, they certainly don't cover, cover the $360,000. I remember we're around 100,000 deficit, and we take it from general taxation. So it's a big, it's a big item, and I just, I see it there. I think people should be aware of that.
Well, the 241 represents the actual year-to-date expenditure, and the revenue side of that is the 196 on page one of the same report. So that's the offsetting, that's the revenue that offsets that expenditure. So even at that, it's 41 plus four, $45,000 roughly, to the negative side as of third quarter, as of the end of the third quarter.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, and we still have a quarter to go, that's correct. So, okay, any further comments on this budget variance report? So I don't see a number, a total number at the end of the operational, but when I come down to the fourth page, the total operating and capital, it looks to me like the budget, the variance is about 3,200,000 as of this point in the year, indicating to me that of the 10 million budgeted, 6 million roughly spent year-to-date, and showing a variance of about 3.2 million, which is about right for the 75% of the year gone past. It's actually showing, actually, a little bit larger surplus than 25%, but I think we still got one more quarter to go, so that's, this last quarter will tell the tale. So any further questions here? Hearing none. About to move on. All right, moving on. Item number 7E is the holiday, well, actually, I'd like to have a motion at this point to receive and review reports 7A, 7B, 7C, and 7D. Counselor Barrett, who have a signature, a secondar, please? Counselor Morrell? And those in favor? And so that motion is carried. Getting these into the minutes now. 7E is the holiday season office hours briefing note in front of you.
So vote.
And we have a mover, who is Counselor Barrett.
Second.
And we have a secondar, which is Counselor Smale. Is going to be any discussion? Deputy Mayor?
Sorry, the question is, we're requiring staff to use their vacation. Can we do that, require them to use those days up as vacation? Is that not something they need to volunteer to do?
Yes, that's absolutely correct. We do need to volunteer, and they were advised to volunteer that some months ago.
Okay. So staff have agreed to not, not, staff will need, but staff have agreed to use it. Would be maybe the more appropriate way of creating this, than not directing staff to force their vacation in a way that they may not want to use it, so.
No, I just, I was just trying to make it clear that there would be no extra cost to the municipality as far as extra time off paid without...
So the half-day is normal closing, the other half-day is vacation?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure everybody was on board, and that this is coming from all of staff, not us telling them that they...
That's right.
Okay, any further question with that? Hearing done. About to call a question on the recommendation. Those in favor? Motion is carried. Okay, so that concludes those few reports. I'm at item number eight on the agenda, which is the council inquiries and notices of motion. Does anyone have anything to bring forward under council inquiries and notices of motion?
I have a question on the CAO ring.
I have nothing.
Not yours, but you don't want any. Any engineers report coming forward?
I expect we'll have it for October 50th, or 6, 8, around next Tuesday.
I see the Robinson Consulting vehicle, it looks like they're on-site doing some site visits.
Yes.
Any other inquiries or notices of motion? Hearing none, I'm moving to item nine on the report. As indicated earlier, there is just a brief report on the 7/30 truck stop. So basically, can say this, the principals from the 7/30 truck stop purchase attended at the municipal office a number of weeks ago to speak to staff concerning their plans. And they indicated at that time that they would be back for a more in-depth meeting with the staff. Now, that meeting was arranged to take place on Thursday, October the 4th, this past Thursday, and I asked to be present because I wanted to meet the folks that were involved. And so I had the pleasure of meeting, actually, they had a foreign person delegation, but I had the pleasure of meeting Major S. Dillon, who is one of the principals. And he has presently the president of a company called MSGD Petroleum. And what we didn't clarify was the corporate structure under which the property will be managed. But suffice it to say that they're looking to our staff to approve the site plan agreement for the property. It's actually a site plan amendment. The new travel center will be called the Cardinal Travel Center. And their plan is to have the fuel concession, the diesel fuel concession, up and running within a couple of weeks. The tanks are all there, the pumps are there, the building that services that fuel concession is suitable for their immediate use. So it's a question of changing the billing technology to that building. So they want to have that up and running immediately. And then they indicate to us that their plans for the new building... that their plans for the new building, and I can't remember, but I think it's eight thousand square feet, they've submitted conceptual drawings, and once they've got their site plan agreement amendment, we will be in a position to issue them a building permit for their new building. Now, their new building will be located closer to County Road twenty-two in the area where the old gas pumps used to be. So they're quite excited about proceeding with this development. The truck stop, the travel center, the Cardinal Travel Center, will be operated under the Esso brand, and so these shops seem to be well-financed, well-organized, and eager to proceed with their development. Now, is there anything I should be adding to that?
No, I don't think so.
Counselor Rell?
Good news, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Did you say it was MSGD Petroleums?
Yes.
MSGD?
Now, that's his existing company, but the travel center, I think, will be run as a, as a separate company with different principles. The last thing I just want to report, so this morning, prior to the county council committee meeting, there was a, a meeting of the county council planning advisory committee, and the purpose of that meeting was to review the Elizabeth Town Kitley official plan. So Elizabeth Town Kitley is the second township to develop a new official plan and submit it to the counties for county approval. So the planning advisory committee had a long briefing this morning from the county planning department, indicating that the plan that was in front of the counties has met all the requirements of the county plan, it's met all the requirements of the provincial policy statements, it's met all the requirements of various other provincial policy statements, and it is gone through the public consultation process in Elizabeth Town Kitley, and has gone through the consultation process with the Aboriginals, the Algonquins, and so consequently, as a result of the presentation this morning, the planning advisory committee recommended to council, to county council, passed a motion to recommend to county council, that that official plan be adopted by council, county council, and signed by the warden and planner. Now, that will probably happen at the October or November meeting of the county council, and the reason I'm reporting that is because that will be the second township official plan that has been, it's a new official plan that has been approved at the county council level, under the new regime. And I believe that where we're, we're at with our official plan will make us the third one. I think we're farther advanced than any of the others. So just reporting that so council gets a feel for what's happening here. So that's my report, basically, and moving to item number ten on the agenda. Are there any questions?
Those are, those are Fisher plans, do they still have to go to Toronto to be approved?
Not anymore. County is...
Once county's accepted, that's it.
Yeah. Now, I'm not, there, this morning at the meeting, there wasn't a single mention of any reference to the provincial level, other than to indicate that the plan was compliant with the provincial policy statements and other provincial requirements, but no reference to the Kingston Planning Office. Any other questions, folks here tonight?
Hearing none, sorry, from back here as well?
Yeah.
So with regards to the budget, looks like so far we have a surplus of about seven hundred K this year, right? That's what, ten percent of the expenditures. Is that gated because we had, know we have a more expensive Q4, or is it, we're actually on track for that surplus?
No, I think, the, the report says to me that we are on track to meet budget. Now, there may be some variances in this last quarter that the staff will pick up probably towards the end of December or January, but we'll be very close to budget. On the operating side, there'll probably be slight differences on the capital side, but most of our capital projects are pretty well-advanced, probably some invoices not yet received. Any other questions?
Well, I have one, just one more there as well, and I guess it's too bad Randy left actually a little early. So it looked like the industrial commercial was way below where we expected to be this year, right? About nine hundred and forty-five thousand versus, versus three point seven billion, I think it was? Is that, do we know where we were putting someone at three point seven million, or did we have projects we're gonna line up with that? Or is it, we just have a historical number we use?
Well, when the budget is prepared, it's not prepared on the basis of historic, but that is one metric that the staff uses to develop the budget. But in addition to the historical metrics that they've seen over the past couple of years, they also have to exercise a judgment as to how they feel things will develop within the year. So, for example, they knew that the big impact on industrial commercial came from Giant Tiger, which was a major project, but that was in seventeen, so that they knew that that wouldn't be matched this year. Now, if you're referring to the third-quarter building report that was discussed earlier in the meeting, that, that report does not show any, any budget amounts, it just shows actual amounts.
So just to answer the question, was why is it fifty thousand in twenty eighteen when it was, or fifty-four for commercial, when it was three hundred and eleven, is because Giant Tiger had a lot of fees?
Okay. That gets to the number of questions. Thank you very much. Any other questions here this evening? Okay, hearing none. Item number eleven, we have no closed session, and item number twelve is adjournment. Chair is looking for a motion to adjourn. Counselor Smale, sent by Mr. Robertson. Those in favor? Motion is carried.